Three dots. What are the blue dots?
Hey, Joe. How are you doing?
Good. How's it going?
Dave?
Good evening.
How's it?
All good.
Great, Chip. Looks like the gang's starting to form.
Who's guys?
Guys.
Hey, Gail.
Look who's back. You're on mute, Gail, but welcome.
Yes, thank you. Daddy wants that to be his background.
What is Jim?
Didn't want to be too early.
Okay.
Got some support there, Mick.
A little follow bomb.
Takes three to make a party.
Welcome, Mickey. We good?
I think he's a little embarrassed.
A little bit.
So I learned how to make, I copied my background and jumped out in the back of it and then went on a Zoom and so that I scared my boss.
Okay, all right. Everyone ready to go? Think we have a call?
Yep.
So I start the captions here.
Like Bill Renaud is gonna get run over.
How dare you?
Straight.
There might be a few guys walking by in a few minutes, I think.
What is that, Abbey Lane?
Abbey Road, yeah.
All right. So good evening, everyone. We'll call this meeting to order for the Town of Wakefield Board of Appeals for February eighth, two thousand and twenty-three. Start with a roll call of board members. Chip Tarbell.
Here.
Jim McDane.
Here.
Joe Pride.
Here.
I'm Lucy.
Here.
Greg McIntosh.
Here.
Nikki Feely.
Here.
And your chair, Dave Hatfield, is present. Joe, do you have the legal notice?
I do. You ready? Consistent with the governor's orders, extended certain provisions of the open meeting law, every effort will be made to allow the public to view and or listen to this meeting in real time. If you don't have a camera, a microphone, or your computer, on your computer, you can also use the following dial-up number, one three oh one seven one five eight five nine two, meeting ID eight six seven five three three nine seven four one nine, passcode seven three seven one six seven. Please use only dial in our computer and not both, as audio feedback will start the meeting. This meeting will be audio and video recorded in compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act. This location is accessible to people with disabilities. Wakefield provides reasonable accommodations and or language assistance free of charge. Upon request, if you are a person with a disability and require information or materials in an alternate format, or you, or if you require and another accommodation, please contact the town's disability coordinator, coordinator, William Renaud, town engineer, at seven eight one two four six six three zero eight. As far in advance of the event as possible, every effort will be made to grant your request. Advanced notification will enable the town to make reasonable arrangements to remove an accessory barrier for you. One, continued hearings. Two, twenty-three dash fifty-four, twenty-three dash fifty-five, Town of Wakefield, DPW. Application for interference under Article Six, Section thirty-four of the Wakefield zoning bylaws to raise and replace in the same footprint, a new water storage tank, application for a special permit under Article Four, Section twenty-three of the Wakefield zoning bylaw to raise and replace the water storage tank on its premises. The property is shown on map twenty-one lot parcel zero two four H forty-eight A of the assessors map and is located at eight Sydney Street. Three, twenty-three dash fifty-six Kelly A Marsden and Alyssa Back. Application for a special permit under Article Four, Section one ninety dash twenty-two A one F of the Wakefield zoning bylaw to add an accessory apartment to a single-family dwelling, the property shown on map map zero, on map nine lot parcel P forty of the assessors map and is located at twenty-one Park Drive, Waterpills.
Thank you, Joe.
Yeah.
Okay. So when the board's agenda tonight, we had several continued hearings which we've been which have been open for several weeks meetings. We've received some correspondence requesting that they be continued from tonight's hearing. So we'll take those up first in case anyone is here for those specific hearings. From attorney Brian McGrail dated February eighth, two thousand and twenty-three regarding Kingman Block LLC, three sixty-nine, three seventy-one Main Street, case numbers twenty-three dash fourteen through seventeen. Requesting that we continue this matter to February twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-three, still in the process of working on revisions to the plans as requested by the board.
I move that we continue this hearing to February twenty-sixth.
Second half.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? Are we voting membership?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So that's unanimous. Anyone's here for that hearing, that'll be heard on our twenty, February twenty-second agenda. Also from attorney Brian McGrail dated February eighth. New Creek LLC, ten Broadway, Wakefield, Mass., case numbers twenty-three dash thirty-nine through forty-two. Requesting that we continue the matter to February twenty-second. Again, still in the process of revising their plans.
Are we okay with dates on this one?
Yeah, we extended it last time. So we're covered for now. Yeah.
Yes, I move that we accept the continuance to February twenty-second.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any discussion on that motion? Our regular voting membership?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So that's unanimous for ten Broadway at our next hearing. Also from Brian McGrail dated February eighth regarding Granite Family Trust LLC at three fourteen, three thirty, and three thirty-six Salem Street. Case numbers twenty-three dash forty-three through fifty. Again, requesting to continue this matter to February twenty-second, and we're still in the process of revising their site plans.
I move that we continue this to February twenty-second.
I second that.
Any discussion on that motion? Okay, same voting membership?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And I too vote yes. Okay, so those three matters will be on our February twenty-second agenda. But please, one continued hearing. Two new hearings, as read by Joe. We do have another matter. We're gonna take that other matter up first because we have a special guest with us this evening. And we wanna listen to this discussion first or take this matter up first. So with with us tonight is special guest Aaron Kokinda, the Community Economic Development Director for Wakefield. Hi, Aaron, welcome. And Bill, you might also be part of this discussion as well, I believe.
I will be, yes.
I assume you're here for the other hearing as well, but
I am.
So welcome, and I think you had some a document or some slides maybe to share and discuss the board. And so if you want to take it away.
So thank you, everyone, for having us today. We good now? Yeah, there we go. So I want to thank you all for having me and Bill tonight. We really appreciate it and how honored I am to have seen you guys twice in the second month of February. I hope you feel as honored as I do to be together again. So I'm here. This is something that I've actually been talking to Bill about. As well as Dave, I've mentioned it and put something in his ear probably since I've started back in December of two thousand and twenty. Transportation Demand Management, also known as TDM. And I do have a short presentation I put together more for myself, just to make sure that I'm covering all my bases and making sure that you guys completely understand of kind of where I'm getting at with this as well as Bill. So I'm gonna see if I can share my screen. Hold on one second. Can you see my screen?
We can, yes.
Okay, so.
I'm sorry, please, Jim, can, I mean, Dave, can you? This is a woman named Alyssa. There's a lot of background noise. It'd be great to have that off before we do anything. Sorry about that.
Yeah, so I'll just keep muting people. Okay, it got quieter. I'll monitor the noise on the side here.
Great, so I just put it up onto a full screen. So Transportation Demand Management. Just to give you guys some background on how I got familiarized with what a TDM is, is prior to me starting with the Town of Wakefield, I worked for the Middlesex Three Coalition, which was a regional economic development organization trying to drive private and public partnerships. And one arm of our our organization was Transportation and Management Association. So that TMA represented the areas of Burlington, Bedford, and Billerica. And we actually, it was called the Middlesex Three TMA, and we had a shuttle service that went from alewife to some of our large employers in that area like iRobot, E Inc., Mitre. So it did the reverse commute, and it was really busy prior to COVID hitting. And I started in November of two thousand and twenty. So you know, right before COVID started in my prior job, we were having conversations with larger housing developments that were in town about having a sort of a reverse commute. So people that were taking the shuttle out, you know, they would drop them off at work, and then we would have a shuttle that would bring back people that lived in the residential larger developments back to alewife. That didn't really come to fruition when I was there due to the pandemic. But another thing to mention with a TMA and TDM, they're two different things, but they kind of fall under the same umbrella is it has everything to do with alternative modes of transportation, biking, walking, rolling, you know, just getting the word out there of other alternatives of a single occupancy vehicle. And I think the town has done a lot of great work, as you guys have seen, and as you've had on your agenda and the continuing hearings tonight. We've seen a lot of development that has occurred for residential and mixed use due to our two thousand and fifteen mixed-use overlay district that was passed, and really that was geared towards more transit-oriented development being along that MBTA line. So we kind of are ahead of other communities when we are looking at that. And I'm kind of thinking ahead as well as we look at this three A, the last presentation we did. And how we address some of our traffic and transportation concerns and look at alternative ideas. So me and Bill were talking, and he put, brought me a bit down to earth and said it's very progressive. We may be ahead of other suburban communities. You'll see a lot of TMAs and TDMs in Cambridge, Somerville. But you know, I always want to kind of think ahead as we're planning. And so with that being said, exactly what is a TDM? And it's defined as a set of strategies aimed at maximizing traveler choices. It's a commuter ride, residential ride-sharing and planning that's restricted to air quality mitigation, development mitigation. So overall, it's just trying to reduce trip generation and parking needs is a big thing. And I know parking is always something that you guys talk about when you have these new projects that are coming through. And then also increasing.
Sorry, just are you trying to go on a different slide? We're still seeing the title slide.
Oh, you are? Yes, I am on a different slide. Let me go back.
Feeling you were probably reading some bullets or something.
I was. Let me go. Let me get out of.
I don't know why. It's a PDF, right?
Yeah. So can you see this now?
Yeah, now we can.
Okay, so I'll just go from page to page. That's fine, too. I'm just gonna move my bar. And it's also meant to increase multimodalism in transportation plans. So when you guys have, excuse me, projects coming forward, I know you guys look at a bunch of different things, what that might look like at traffic lights nearby, what the traffic increase might be. And I know there's been talks about looking at an overall traffic study of our whole town. And I know you guys have the traffic studies that come through. So the ultimate goal is to shift away from single occupancy vehicles, like I mentioned. And I'm kind of repeating myself, but providing alternative modes of transportation. So public, you know, really pushing public transit, carpooling, vanpooling, ride-sharing, walking, cycling. And it's also to better educate folks that are living in these developments or just residents in general. And I should also note this as my job as economic development, too, is some of these larger businesses that we hope to attract from the Boston area. If they have a large amount of employees that might be doing that reverse commute, how do we work with those businesses to let their employees know that there's other options out there? So the benefits of having a TDM, it's all, you know, here for you guys to see, but conserving energy and reducing emissions. I know we just became a green community, so that's something that we talk about a lot. Reducing the wear and tear on our roads, and we have bridges here, but you know, I think we hear about roads a lot and impact that a lot of the cars may have on it. Improving community health and fitness levels. Achieving equity. Enhanced quality of life and creating a walkable, bikeable community. Solving parking problems, which I actually had a parking meeting today about some complaints about never being able to find parking. Enhanced community safety and making alternative transportation more affordable. So I'd like to say we're kind of ahead of the curve in a lot of things. And I think you guys really took the initiative with two hundred Quanta Power with the shuttle that you would like them to put forward with their new development, going to the MBTA stations. Sorry, I have a coworker with me right now. And and to our downtown area. So you know, the shuttle is really a a big thing when you're looking at a TDM or a TMA. Like I mentioned, there's a lot of smaller things that can be done. But I think if we can build upon that shuttle with any new developments that are happy, happening outside of walking, biking distance from our MBTA stations in downtown that can really help us mitigate some of the traffic and transportation concerns that we may have on some developments on Salem Street or Audubon Road or anything that we might see coming forward. And then Bill and I have been really working closely. Bill and has been working on this bike and pedestrian plan over the last year and a half, two years. And then we hope to have a final product within the next couple of months. But looking at our current and future biking and pedestrian connectivity and accommodations to encouraging more biking, walking, and rolling. And then a lot of microtransit opportunities have been highlighted, having a microtransit shuttle going around town that maybe can serve seniors, and if we can partner with the senior center, some of these developments, just to get more people out of their, their cars and, and moving around a little better. So I sent you guys a, if you had a chance to look at it, I tried to find community that is similar to us. There really isn't many around here that have really implemented any of these practices yet. But I've spoken to a number of them, and they said, let me know how it goes, and we love to build upon it as well in our community. But I did find Watertown, who has a similar population size to us, and they implemented a TDM back in two thousand and nineteen. And it really has to do with some of their residential, industrial, and commercial properties. So they have two different project types, one being a basic TDM, and I won't read through this whole thing. But with residential, it's ten to thirty-nine residential units, commercial ten thousand, thirty thousand square feet and things to do with employees. So again, I just want to note this does have to do with helping, you know, businesses as well get some, and help us get some cars off the road. And so then they have a comprehensive TDM, which is for some of these larger developments with forty or more residential units. Some mixed-use developments that, you know, we've seen office and industrial and some retail here. And so what that might look like for TDM efforts, and I really did pull a lot of these things of like what best practices and measures that we could put in for some of these developments when they come through and and do, and we have to do any conditions, and when they have to report is look at our parking, kind of work with the property owner to separate cost of parking from the cost of renting, leasing, or ownership. Improve walking conditions, so maybe working with the developer while they're coming for you for their special permit on you know, improving our current sidewalk connection that's near their property and to transit. Bicycle parking, going to our bike pad plan. I think that would make the town really happy. But also give accommodations to folks that are, are moving there. A bike share membership. I know we've, I've talked to other communities about possibly having some sort of bike share. Free bikes, support transit stops, car sharing. I mentioned the new sidewalks to transit, shuttle service. You know, and real time, again, I won't read through all these real-time transportation information displays, which I was really impressed. If you haven't seen Greason Lost yet, they have a really nice board there in live time of, you know, when the train's coming, when the next bus is coming. So if there's things like that that we could kind of put forward with somebody, just these developments within walking and biking distance, you know, for some of the developments. So again, this is really text-heavy, and I apologize, but the ultimate goal is to get away from single occupancy vehicles to alleviate, you know, some parking concerns, wear and tear on the roads, air quality. And I just think everything's pretty positive from if you implement something like this. And again, it doesn't have to be as large as the shuttle service. But I think this is just something I pulled again from Watertown and what that looks like, and it would fall internally through the town and doing some monitoring every year. And Bill nicely volunteered the Traffic Advisory Committee, which I know many of your projects go there as well, and internal departments as well. So prior to you, you know, prior to them getting their their special permit with you, they'd have to submit a plan of what their TDM program would look like. Get the okay from you guys, get the okay from Traffic Advisory Committee, and make sure all requirements are approved. And then prior to occupancy permit, we must confirm that all that they're, all the things that they mentioned they were gonna do are actually being followed through with. And then a year after occupancy and every year thereafter, maybe up to five years, we could kind of review the projects and make sure that they are staying true to what they said they were gonna do. And so, Bill, please jump in if there's anything that I kind of forgot. I didn't want to go. I don't want to take any more of your time, but you know.
I think just the management of, of these TDMs, so that falls under the project owner or the project to do that. So basically, they designate a person that's responsible for ensuring these, you know, the, the ride shares and the bike shares, and all these things are still happening and that they're advocating for that to happen for new people coming in. So there, there's another process and then the leg that goes to it. So I mean, I think the big piece here is that this is very, very progressive. You know, the, the Watertown version is a lot. I would say is a lot more scaled down than, say, the Cambridge one. That's very, very aggressive, in my opinion. But you know, I think the question is, is this something that the, that the board would want to, you know, look at as a, you know, as a, as a potential bylaw in the future, or is this something that we want to look to? You know, to administer even in a lighter version of this. So you know, I think it's, it's just thoughts and, and where would we think about going in the future? And I know, Chip, you've asked about this in the past, so this should be right up your alley.
Yeah, and we're here just to put the information out there. You guys are the ones that see the projects all the time. And so we wanted to really gain your input and feedback and see if maybe I need to be brought down, we need to be brought down to earth. But I think, like I was saying, with the three A coming through, and you know, with Boston in general just growing as much as it is, I think we need to start thinking a little more, be a little more forward thinking, so.
All right, I see Chip's hand is up, so go ahead, Chip.
All right, so. So I love this thought, and I, I think you know, we almost have started it with two hundred Quanta Power, right? What they have to, and part of their project requirements is to start a shuttle service. And the only way I think it will really work is if more people jump on, diffuse the cost of it greater. You know, right up and down North Ave is a perfect place for it. You know, and as we go on to Salem Street or Lowell Street, or as some of the new housing developments come in, I think they should be asked and or required to join. Now, I think there's a lot of work that has to do with how expensive is it gonna be? What does that mean? What does that look like? Right? But I, I don't think it's unreasonable to start thinking about that as we move forward, and, and we have a great base to start it from. So I'm all in favor of it. I, I think there's a lot more chance of shuttle service and transportation than probably, you know, convincing people in their suits to jump on a bike and drive down to the train. You know, so, so especially in New England and our weather these days and everything else. So shuttle service. You know, I love the idea of two hundred Quanta Power. When they want to go downtown for dinner, they jump on a shuttle. They're coming home, you know. Many of us shouldn't be driving after going to dinner. So you know, it just gives people great opportunities.
Yeah. Sorry, Chip, I didn't mean.
No, I just, I just, I think it's gonna be difficult to figure out what the total package looks like at the end. What's the cost, all those type of things.
I mean, and it also could be used to tailor towards projects that are in the bike and pad plan, too. That, that comes in as a series of projects, too. So we're not just getting a you know what, stripe every road that you can. That's not what we're doing. We're looking for specific areas that we have as like high, you know, I would say destinations that people would want to go to in town, whether it's a park, a school. You know, civic buildings. Yeah, commercial district, all that type of stuff. So we're looking at how you get from A to B. That was part of the, what we tasked the consultant with, with that. And that includes a series of projects, and it could be set up where, you know, if, if a developer is interested in doing, you know, in, in doing something like this, or we mandate it, then you'd be looking at, you know, a Um you'd be looking at, you you know, a potential for them to fund a project that if it's at a certain level or threshold, you know, I mean, we we did a lot of that, I think, too, with. With two hundred Quanta powered as well, so it's just something to think about.
Aaron, Aaron, it's Mickey, um a quick question, I I did you get a sense of what um? The threshold would be in whether it be Cambridge, Somerville, uh ten units, hundred units? Um or if it's. My my issue is that like if you're building a fifteen unit building. Um you you're gonna have to get somebody to manage this for you and and then put in. Um the coordination and the ride share and the bike.
Yeah, and and I think that's a concern too, I think we need to look at projects, so for example, two hundred Quanta Power, we all know that they probably have the capacity to handle something like this, they're gonna have a property manager. That's gonna be their day in, day out, that can facilitate these things. And so when it comes to the kind of that threshold with like fifteen units, they might not have a property manager there twenty four seven, they're gonna have someone down in an office in Cambridge, right? Um and so I think we need to think about that internally, what that looks like, maybe they don't aren't part of, maybe we have those tiers, right, within um. You know, like uh the basic TDM comprehensive, again, this is just a guide and I need to do some more digging myself, but.
I think it's fantastic.
Yeah, and I think, you know, maybe for them, it's when these projects are coming through, like what Bill was just saying, you know, there's a sidewalk uh connection missing there that's. Preventing people from getting close, you know, getting to the train or a bike, you know, things like that, or maybe it's for them, it's putting in bike racks to promote more biking around town. Not joining a shuttle service, you know, so I think there will be thresholds um to, you know, depending on what um. You know, the you know, with how many units are gonna be, the capacity that some of these developments may have. Um I know some of them on Salem, I forget the exact numbers of all them, but they're a little smaller, but. I feel like we could work with them where they're being more on the outskirts that they would find that as an amenity and want to be part of it. The ones closer to the train that they could walk, I feel like there's different ways that maybe we could work with them um in in that capacity, so. Um yeah, I'd have to do, you know, and Bill, I don't know if you have anything to add about that, I think every project will be unique, but I do think we have to kind of have like those tiers of of. You know, the projects and what they look like.
Yeah, I mean, that's sort of how Cambridge's example is, they have tiers and certain ideas of projects and it's almost like an à la carte menu that they pick and say, okay. But they 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 do it structured on a certain reduction in in single occupancy vehicles as a as a essentially a set threshold. Uh that I think might be a little bit too much for our community, but um. I I I think that there's an opportunity for, say. A a suite of types of things that that the board would want to do and have implemented in them, um and I think that would make more sense. And I think it helps the developers as they're coming in too, because they're gonna see this and they're gonna know to build it into the project. And Brian should be shaking his head right now saying, yeah, that would be great for me to have, so you know, to know that this is the, these are the things that we want to see built in and you know, it's it's a lot easier for. For them to to plan for these things as they're coming in, so rather than being reactive, I think, you know, during the during the hearings themselves.
Yeah, and I think a lot of um, for example, two hundred Quanta Power, you know, when you guys had the shuttle conversation, I knew um Matt already has worked with transaction, so a lot of this whole TDM and TMA thing. Isn't new, new information to a lot of them, but I think we do need to think about one of those smaller developments and how we work with them um to implement them as well.
Okay, I see some other hands up, why don't we just keep it moving again in the interest of time, so Tom, I think your hand.
I I I was just gonna say that uh I have a lot of experience dealing with this in Cambridge, Boston, Somerville. I thought the thresholds on there were a little low, I I'm glad that came up, a ten unit. Uh development's gonna have a tough time paying into a T TMA. Situation, but also, you know, just caution, maybe because it's Cambridge and it is aggressive. You know, it's a lot of staff time for the town, if someone has to monitor these and keep track of them, you're talking almost a full time job. And you're also, if you're going to put these demands on these developments. And they might welcome them, but they're also gonna put some demands back on the town in terms of they want safe bike routes, if you're pushing people out of their. Single occupant cars, their their options are walking, biking. And uh and the T are the three biggest ones, right? So they're not just gonna want, you know, bike lanes in certain parts of the town that go to parks or something, if those folks are going to work or commuting. To Wakefield from places, they're gonna want safe bike lanes. Uh get to on those sites, so it's it 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 kind of goes both ways. Um I I totally agree with what you're doing, I think we should be doing, I'm glad we did it at two hundred corner power. Uh I think it's the right thing to do, um but I think I was glad you you gotta be flexible on both location in the town. And the size of the development, you gotta kind of get that right.
I think it's good feedback, no, definitely good feedback.
Yeah, absolutely.
Jim, um your hand is up.
Yeah, um so. I guess when you start talking about smaller unit counts. I'm wondering whether there isn't a way, and maybe you already discussed it at some time or other, at least in the concept. Of gathering up a number of buildings basically and have them basically work together to share that responsibility, or maybe they're a spin off from a. A a larger group basically that forms this so that. Because if if there are too many groups and too many vehicles running around. Um then you get a, then you get cross patterns basically that will just put more vehicles on the street, so. Quanta Power it has, you know, their buses and somebody else has their buses and so on and so on, so. There's got to be some real organization here and it seems to me it ought to ought to all be under one umbrella and for the smaller projects, basically this some way. Well, the the major projects basically run the process, but there's some way they buy into it. Um without being, uh you know, extremely. Uh without it being extremely expensive for them to operate, they don't manage it, they just provide some funding basically towards it or something like that. Some way basically to expand the opportunities basically for other projects, even small ones.
Yep, no, I think that's a good point, it's definitely, I think, I would envision something like that, where it could be, you know, building things for other projects, definitely, I I think that makes a ton of sense. You know.
And yeah, this isn't just a Wakefield pro- problem too, I've had conversations with other communities, like how do we look at this regionally and shared resources and things like that, and that's kind of what the Middlesex Street TMA was. And I'm not saying we create a whole TMA, I think, again, this is just sorry, initial stages and um I think all the feedback that you're providing is really helpful and again, I want to be mindful too of. Time uh town time and staff and how much, you know, um. Goes into that too, because we want to make sure, we don't want to just say we're gonna do these things and then not do them too, so.
So. So you guys are gonna continue to work on this, vet the details, maybe put some more.
Yeah.
Bought into like the different scale uh options and different tiers. Um what you also shared with us um appeared to be a, is that a a bylaw or an ordinance that Watertown passed with some real like. Requirements that new developments that meet these sort of guidelines or or criteria. Sort of have to follow it as part of their special permit and site plan review, right?
Correct, yeah, so that's kind of like the guide that um they they follow every year and monitor and things like that, so.
Process wise, with this, if we're gonna do that in Wakefield, that would be probably run through the planning board as a bylaw change. Once we're ready to do that is to draft a bylaw, take it through public hearings through the planning board and ultimately town meeting. But until, and that could take a, I don't know, a year or two, I don't know what you're thinking timeline wise realistically, but until then, we might have to take some of this. Um and certainly each new project that comes in is gonna continue to go to you, Bill, and all the other departments for review, so. It might be like a a light bulb, say, hey, this is a potential candidate, it might fit into that, one of those tiers, and then part of your feedback is. Let's let's um you know, have that conversation early in the process. Yeah, I'm kind of envisioned it the, like as these projects come to the TAC, it there, it's already built in as the process that before it comes to you folks, right, or we're kind of involved early on. And that it would be sort of vetted at that point, that's.
Okay.
How I was envisioning it, um.
But until we have bylaw, we have something, something that we can say for this type of project, these are probably some of the options you want to consider and then. It could be some back and forth with the applicant, right?
Definitely, oh definitely, yeah, so I think sort of the idea.
Yeah.
Yeah, that mean the ongoing management of it, I think, is the piece that I have the biggest question about and how that happens and gets managed, that's. That's where I get hung up, to be honest with, and I don't know how it works in these other cities and towns, I'd be interested to find out, but. You know, I think the big, the important thing here was just to see if there's an appetite for this and if there is, then we can advance, see what the public thinks and then, you know, it's either. It's either a go or it's a no go, right, that's usually how it works.
Yeah, absolutely.
Generally, hearing good feedback, I just, you know, with with these caveats, just so you can continue to vet it, work the details, maybe those different tiers depending on the size of the projects, they come before us. Um but um I I think, yeah, it's all good.
Awesome.
Um yeah.
Anyone else?
Yeah, me again.
Okay.
Um so, Bill, um. We have some natural drop off points, pickup, drop off points, particularly for buses and other things like that. But I assume you're gonna have to create some more, which may be taking some parking spaces out of play. Because someone has to stop at certain times, basically drop people off and pick people up, particularly when you're talking about. Share rides or vans or something like that.
Yeah, not necessarily though, because it could be on a private property if they're part of the group, I I don't, it would not necessarily public par- parking, but it could be something on a. On a private property where we we allow a, you know, a relief there. And it would be on private property so that you'd have these locations where folks would be stopping.
Well, I throw it out there only because I think as you as you broaden this and look at it in more detail, you're probably gonna end up having to create some of these spaces, just like. Just like we do uh for drop off uh when trucks come and make deliveries and stuff like that. Yeah, I mean, right now we got trucks making delivery in the in the middle of the day on Main Street, when in fact they're supposed to be there about five to six o'clock in the morning.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So lots of things through, but again, like I said, you guys are the ones that see a lot of these projects, so I wanted to come to you guys first and kind of get initial feedback um. And a lot to think about, but I just really appreciate your time and just want you guys to know that we're thinking about this too um from uh an internal level as well, so.
All right, well, certainly welcome to come back again as you vet this more, say, whatever, down the road, six months if. Things have sort of refined and you've gotten more information um and from talking other towns and you want to bring it back, um you know, welcome to certainly do so. Um and also, would you mind sharing the slides you actually shared tonight in addition to the one, the 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 other documents you sent?
Absolutely.
Okay, just good info to kind of get us thinking and um. And um again, if board members have other feedback, we certainly know where to find Jaren.
Yeah, yeah, please, yeah.
Um so there's. Opportunity for some of that offline uh feedback as well, certainly. Okay. Cool. All right, thank you very much for your uh information and attending tonight, uh it's all good and we uh.
Maybe I'll see you guys again soon, if you have anything else you want me to come back with.
Um I don't know, SHI numbers.
I could do that.
Uh when when it's a good time.
My favorite topic.
I know. Yeah, I think it's, I think it's been six, nine months since, you know, but.
Yeah, no, I'd be more than happy.
Updated with.
Yeah, they are, yeah.
Now move forward, so I'm sure things continue to evolve, so once you get a a an opportunity to sort of. Update your sheet and I got a master sheet, um be good to just bring that back to just we're all up to date.
Sounds great, all right, I look forward to it, thank you.
All right, thanks, Aaron, thanks, Bill, take care. Okay. So moving back to the top of the agenda, we have one continued hearing, twenty two dash thirty nine zero North Ave Wakefield LLC at five ninety six North Ave.
Mr. Chair, you wanna?
Yes.
The last time, maybe?
Uh perhaps, we'll see. Okay, Board Member Joe Pride has been recused as he has for the um for the duration of these hearings for this project. So with that, Jesse, I saw you, there you are. Welcome.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chair, for the record, attorney Jesse Schumer represent representing the applicant Zero North Ave LLC tonight. Uh with me tonight for the record is, I saw I'm here, Peter Sandors from Phoenix Architects, Architects of Record. Elliot Brundage from Elliot Brundage Landscape Design, he's he's our architect, landscape architect of record, and I believe Chris Barages from Williams and Barages will be on. Momentarily, I'm I'm informed that he's coming from a different meeting and and will be logging on shortly. In case there's any need for his uh his services tonight, also uh with us tonight, Mr. Chair from Ownership is Dana Lopez from Wakefield Associates. Um to update the board members, since we were last before you a few weeks ago, we've uh gone to the ZBA Subcommittee last Thursday. Uh which was attended by uh Ms. Chair, um by um Mr. Glenn, I'm gonna I'm gonna forget uh Greg, uh Mr. McIntosh was was in attendance for the board as well. Uh and also the the meeting was attended by Town Council Tom Mullen, who had some some very helpful thoughts with respect to the draft. And some of the conditions that we have dra- drafted for the uh for the board's review in in assessing uh the determination on this project. Uh we have a a draft, which I think is in in good shape and we've gone through it at 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 great length with Attorney Mullen and and with the the ZBA Subcommittee. And with Mr. Glenn and um we're just looking forward to going through that draft tonight to to as uh greater level of details the board members. Would like to discuss it and um go through the waiver list if that's appropriate as well. Uh but with that intro, I'll I'll turn it back to you, Mr. Chair, to uh to to let us know how you'd like to proceed.
Right, thank you, Jesse, yep, it was a productive meeting and um. Yeah, we've received feedback from uh other board uh boards in town um. On the draft at this point, including Bill Renault, um and I think Rebecca from Con- Conservation so forth, so. I think we've vetted a pretty good draft, we've vetted the waivers, the conditions, and again, getting Tom Co- um Town Council's input last week, I think was helpful. Uh we um so at this point in my mind, I think we're. Um we're at a point now where I think we've vetted just about everything, um I think we needed to for this project. Um I did forward the the updated um draft decision and and waivers off to the rest of the board members. I I would recommend that if people have specific questions. That we can pull up, maybe share um the the document and go through them. Um but given that it's whatever it is. Um you know, twenty something findings and forty waivers and forty something conditions, um I don't think we need to go through all of it. But certainly if there anyone has any questions, I would say please raise your hand and let's let's briefly discuss them and then see where we go from there. Chip, I see your hand up. You have to.
Yeah, my my question is Dave, and I certainly appreciate your and Greg's time. Um I would just like to hear from Ezra and Greg as to where they think we are. And if all three of you are on the same page. That we're in good shape, I don't need to hear all of them, I I just want to know that you three are. Comfortable, think we got it all covered. Uh and we don't, in my opinion, need to waste, not waste, I don't think we need to spend a lot of time going through each and every detail. Um I tried to get started reading them and. I might have fallen asleep.
I agree with. I agree with Dave, I think it's all, uh we 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 had a good back and forth. With Jesse, uh some cleanup, some substantive comments, uh we sort of whittled down the. The waiver list and conformed it to the actual requested waivers, um our findings are all are all buttoned up, so I'm comfortable where it is. Um and also, Tom Mullen took a look at it, not just from a sort of overall legal. View, but there were some questions on, you know, forcibility of some of the conditions and he was comfortable with the languages drafted. You know, specifically things like we request the applicant to work with the MBTA to move this, it's, you know, we can't force them because it's not their bus station, that type of thing.
Um Mr. Chair, would you like me to just weigh in a little bit, is that helpful?
Yes, thank you.
Um as I, you know, we we covered this a little bit last at last meeting as well, um you know, you. You've really reviewed this thing quite a lot, um you know, and remember you've had, you know, I think about a dozen meetings here at the ZBA and then quite a lot of work in the working group. You know, I think in some ways for me, what what is the question about, you know, are we headed to closure is? Um is the plan where it needs to be, you know, I think it's easy to get mired in the in the actual written decision and look at all the waivers and the conditions, but really the most important is. The agreement on a final plan set, and I think Jim was really very, very key there and sort of. Tracking everything all the way through up to that final working group meeting and then, you know, even a couple of things after that and saying. This decision, you know, references all those plans down to the very final one and that's the approved one, you know, and I think. That's in some ways the most important blueprint for for what you're approving. Assuming you're approving it, and then beyond that, it's it's making sure that the town officials who weighed in and had certain concerns about conditions. Have agreed and and we've brought it by them, and then exactly as we said, the last piece is making sure that the lawyers are all comfortable. Um and they they gave a a um a green light on that, so. To me, you know, I wouldn't get mired in the in the waivers, although if you have any questions, you certainly should raise them, but really the waivers are. What is considered necessary to deliver the plan, which is more than just a pretty picture, it's really a kind of a promise of what you expect them to then build and manage. So that's, I would say, you know, from my point of view, I'm comfortable that everything we discussed that and flagged and resolved is now included in there. Um it's up to you whether you're comfortable with the final project, and I think you've you've done some soul searching and gotten to that point, but um. But in terms of the process, I think, yes, I'd be, I'd say it's all in there. But in terms of the process, I think, yes, I'd be, I'd say it's all in there.
Thank you, Ezra. No, that's another good perspective on it. Yeah, we, we can get lost in the weeds, um, for sure. But, uh, yeah, I'm actually, um, I've got the final plans. They're all packaged up. Board members, again, in my opinion, um, and to Greg and others. You know, we've got the final plans, um, they're noted in the decision. I have them all here. I think we've vetted them. You know, both from the site, the architecture, the landscaping. And the rest of it, right? So in my mind, I think we've got a final set of plans that we've vetted over the course of several months. Um, both at subcommittee and in the full board hearings. Um, so I'm comfortable proceeding, um, and determining that we've, we've got a final set of plans, a vetted project. And, uh, you know, ready to proceed.
To Ezra's comment, basically, I had reviewed the, um, documents to make sure the listed drawings are there. And to Dave's comment, yes, we have the package. Yes, it is covered within the documents as far as the listed drawings. There were several comments that I made back to Jesse and Dave, some of which I had just missed. The commentary that was in the documents and I thought it was missing, but it turns out that they weren't. So I'm quite satisfied. With the listing of documents and the documents that are in the package.
Okay, any other board member? At this point, again, if you feel like there's anything we haven't vetted to its final conclusion, any lingering questions in your head about aspects of this project? Speak now.
I guess the only thing I want to confirm, Dave, is that when, because I'm not used to this going to Concom at the end. Does it, if the, if the Concom changes anything on our plans? Anything moves that something afoot, moves something six inches, makes a suggestion that they want done. Does that, does anything come back to us or is there a threshold that comes back to us?
There is a process for it to come back to us, but within that process is then a threshold to whether you open another public hearing. So it'll come back to us and then that first. You can equate it to a minor, minor. You know, I'm trying to say a minor modification. Uh, it's the difference between substantial and substantial change within the reg, the C M R, the regulations there is laid out. Examples of what are substantial changes. If it is, we deem it as substantial change, it opens to a, another public hearing. If it isn't, it, we can deal with it the same way we do with minor modifications, essentially. But yes, they will have to come back.
Comes back to us, right?
Yeah.
Okay. That's all I want to make sure of. So that we never end up like, how did this happen?
Yep, and even some of the things we've discussed along the way, they're in the decision, but they say at the discretion of the Con, it acknowledges that they still have to go there. And things could come up and things may change at their discretion. So it, it does acknowledge it as well. That we've considered certain things, but it's truly at their discretion, um, certain aspects, you know, relative to the wetlands and the stream and all of that. So they'll have another bite at it and they'll come back if they have to, if anything changes. Anyone else?
Yeah, just to, to that point, to, to Mr. Trabel's point, Mr. Chair. Generally, my recommendation to my clients in these kind of forty B projects is where there is a series of, of minor changes. That, that happened during the course of, from where we are now to where, where the, the, the client is ready to, to go down to Ben's office. With construction documents is to really come in proactively to the board with a, with a series of, of what the proposed changes are. And, 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 and the reason for that is just to avoid any surprises when we get to that point. And I recognize that some, some prior projects have not, not taken that advice to a hundred percent. Uh, but my, my goal in this project and my clients on the line is to, to be as proactive as we can with this board. So, uh, I, I have no doubt that we'll be seeing you all again.
We appreciate that. Some are better than others about coming back and being proactive versus. Oh, by the way, this thing got built and now we're asking for permission. Forgiveness. So no, we appreciate that and I look forward to that, that happening. Any other board members, comments, questions?
No, well, doesn't have to do with that. It's, I'll tell you, this one's a little bit frustrating for me. I served on the, uh, the working committee and, you know, we did the best we can. I think as a board, we did the best we can. What we can do with these forty Bs is limited. I do think this project is too big for the site. You know, it's a shame that it started out before some rezoning as a six or nine unit townhouse. And, um, you know, some of the folks that like to wag their fingers in our face about what we do, turned it from six units into thirty-six units. And here we are. Um, so. But I don't think it's the best outcome for the town and it's not all the developer's fault and it's not our fault, so. Just frustrating. Pretty well in a, in an opinion call.
Thanks, Tom. I understood, appreciate the work you, you and, um, had done on that. Not much I can add. Appreciate the comments, so. Anyone else?
And then, Mr. Chair.
What's that? Sounds like we're ready for a motion then?
Uh, potentially, I'm gonna, because we.
Oh, yeah, we still, I'm sorry, I thought that was closed.
I'm gonna open it up to public hearing, uh, any participation or comment, uh, potentially for the last time, um, just in due course. If there is anything, uh, if anyone is on the call and has a question or comment about this project. Now's the time to raise your hand. Okay, seeing no hands, I'll close it to public testimony. Um, so I think, um, procedurally, we should, um. Unless there's anything else to talk about, we should, um. Uh, entertain a motion to close the public hearing. If we're ready to do so, followed by then potentially a vote, uh, with the five voting members, myself, Chip, Jim. Tom and you, Greg. On the comprehensive permit relative to the many findings, waivers and conditions in that draft decision. And we don't have to read them all, but we can certainly, uh, um, reference them in, in any motion. Uh, but procedure, I think those are the two steps. Jesse, is there anything else in your mind?
Nothing else in my mind, Mr. Chair. I, I think all the, the waivers and, and decisions on conditions are all embodied in the decision. So I think the vote on that suffices from, from my perspective unless, unless Ezra has any disagreement on that.
Yep, sounds, whatever your, you know, local practice is, is the best way to do it.
So I move that we close the public hearing.
Okay, I think I heard Tom second. Thank you. Any discussion on the motion to close the public hearing? All right, voting members, Greg.
Yes.
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 Jim.
Yes.
And I vote yes. So the public hearing on this project is now closed.
Uh, and I move that we grant the comprehensive permit pursuant to. Uh, Mass General Laws, Chapter forty B and the regulations there under to allow this thirty-six unit multifamily apartment development. In a single building at the property located at five seventy-two to five ninety-six North Ave, also known as Zero North Ave in Wakefield. Sorry, scrolling down to the, uh, based on the, uh, preliminary civil engineering plans. Prepared by William and Sparages dated December twentieth, uh, excuse me, December second, twenty twenty, with a revised date of December fourteenth. Twenty twenty-two, the architectural pri- plans prepared by Phoenix Architects. Dated September twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two. And the landscape archi- architecture plans dated December ninth, twenty twenty-two. Um, and that the, the, uh, comprehensive permit. Shall include the waivers as listed and reviewed in the draft decision and the conditions as listed and reviewed in the draft decision and within this meeting. That's it. That's my motion.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? All right, same voting members, Greg.
Yes.
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 Jim.
Yes.
And I vote yes. So it's unanimous. Thank you to everyone on, on the call and board members. Ezra, thank you very much for your assistance with this one. Um, again, you're on mute, by the way. It looks like you're nodding or maybe.
Yeah, yeah, just thank you for being such a great board to work with.
I have one question now, not, nothing with this, but is it one of the requirements on forty B if they make X amount of money? That there's a financial report at the end due to us to know whether there's money that comes back to us based on profitability and all that. And I don't remember.
There is, there is, um, one of the requirements, uh, in order to, to be eligible for forty B, the, the applicant needs to be one of three eligibility requirements. They need to either be public agency, a nonprofit, or a limited dividend corporation. Where that exactly what, um, Mr. Tarbell is talking about, where they're limited in terms of how much profit they can make. Um, and that's a review done, um, by subsidizing agency and D H C D later. And I'm not sure, I imagine there must have been some times when they do go over, but in general, I think they've been pretty good about. Um, not having projects that go over. And then the, the basic idea there is exactly, you know, that forty B is supposed to be a tool to get. In affordable housing in, uh, in every community, not supposed to be a tool to make developers rich. And so that was, you know, the, when the general court, uh, wrote this up, that was one of the requirements. So, yeah. Um, I, I, I think it's, it's fairly late after the process and I'm not sure if they automatically provide that to the town or if you have to ask for it. Um, but it should be part of the process.
Thank you, Ezra.
Well, on our end, Mr. Chair and board members, thank you. We really appreciate everyone's time and, and work on this project, particularly the members. Who participated in the, the subcommittees and, and all the, the town department heads, um, Ms. Kokenda, um. Ms. Renaud, um, Ms. Davis, everyone's comments and, and feedback on this project. Uh, very much appreciated and, and, and I think it's better because of those comments. So we've been at this for the better part of a year and I think most of us are a little bit grayer in the face. Although Mr. Tarbell seems to look younger than, than ever somehow. But really appreciate all your, all your time and, and, uh, always a, a good experience working with this board.
Thanks, Jesse. Um, same to you and we'll talk offline, obviously, where we've got a draft decision. We just, um, a couple, couple minor things to, to. Redline and clean up and we'll, we'll get it filed.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Have a good night. All right, bye Ezra. Talk to you soon, perhaps. We'll see. All right. Check mark on that one. Okay, new hearings. Um, Brian, you're with us. Brian, I saw him.
I, I am, Mr. Chair, I'm gonna defer to, uh, Mr. Renaud, the town engineer. So I didn't know that the town official was on the agenda, so I'm happy to, happy to wait.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, did you bring back the, the member in the, you know, in the penalty box?
Yep. Thank you for the reminder. Probably up the top there, but yep, thank you.
Joe's back.
Joe's back.
The penalty, I like that.
Yeah, the penalty box. Projects approved, we're moving on. All right, so we will, uh, proceed with the first new hearing on our agenda, twenty-three dash fifty-four and fifty-five, Town of Wakefield, D P W, at eight Sydney Street.
Uh, good evening, folks. Bill Renaud, town engineer. Uh, I am here with, uh, Ryan Algro from Environmental Partners, our design engineer for the tank replacement at Harts Hill. I got a very quick PowerPoint, um, that I will share with you folks quickly. Can you see my screen? Does that work?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Uh, so basically. Our project location, this is, no, there we go. Okay. So, um, our project is located at the intersection of, um, Upland Road and Sydney Street. Um, our existing tank circa nineteen twenty-seven has hit its useful, useful life. So about a year ago, the town, um, contracted with Environmental Partners to evaluate a bunch of options for either the repair, the replacement. Or the elimination of the tank, um, after evaluating a bunch of different alternatives. We elected to move forward with the replacement in the same location with a newer glass line bolted steel tank. We looked at a, a bunch of other options for tank materials as well, including concrete, but the site constraints just really wouldn't allow us to make that happen. Uh, so basically, these are kind of an off-the-shelf type of, um, manufacturer. So, um, from a dimensional standpoint, we bought the tank that's essentially is close to the size of what we have there today. Um, it's about six inches, um, wider in diameter. And it is about two feet higher, um, capacity is a little bit more, obviously based on those, um, uh, those dimensions. Um, we did meet with the neighborhood prior to the meeting. We had a, a, a public, um, a public meeting at town hall to discuss the project. Um, one of the big things that we heard from the folks was that they wanted to see a bolted steel, I'm sorry, a, um. A sky blue material. So we were originally looking at a, um, a, uh, uh, blue, like a darker blue. Um, and they, they prefer to see something that mimics the similar color that we have today. So that's what we're gonna move forward with. They do manufacture it in that color, so we'll include that. So give you an idea of, uh, essentially our site design. So we have, um, a tank that's gonna be installed and essentially the same footprint that we have today. That's a blue. Um, we're going to be adding a new driveway, um, on, that would be the northern side of the site. To allow access to an existing booster pump station that feeds some of the folks in this area. Um, we're replacing, um, the control shed that is, um, here in this, this, um, yellow area. Um, what that provides is essentially a, um, a, a larger, um, area for us to sample and do some of the water quality things that we're required to do. Um, the tank does have an overflow spillway in case it ever gets, um, you know, too much water within the tank. Uh, so the emergency overflow does flow into a catch basin system that would, um, flow into the town system and, and be carried away. So that that covers that piece. Um, we do have a series of, um, of landscaping that we're including within the project. So we have, um, uh, basically all these smaller trees that you're seeing that are identified are proposed. Either, um, you know, conifer or, uh, deciduous trees that'll be planted interspersely through here to, to screen the, um, the. Neighbors from the, from the location. We have a smaller buyer retention area that's gonna be installed. Um, to handle some of the stormwater that would be, uh, generated because we are looking at a new, um, uh, a new access around it. That'll be a gravel access path. We'll call it impervious area. Um, and then, um, we would have a new, brand new planting bed. That'd be located towards the, um, that would be the eastern side of the site adjacent to Sydney. Um, that will be our main access, so there won't be any vegetation in this area. Um, the yellow areas that you see highlighted are spots where we have existing vegetation that we're gonna maintain to the best of our ability. Um, so we're not looking to, to essentially remove, um, the majority of, of, of what's already there. Um, here's a quick rendering showing a street view, looking from Sydney of what the tank would look like. Again, we changed the color to more of a sky blue. Uh, here's our new and updated planting area, the driveways on both sides, and then our, our buyer attention area would be here. So, um, that's a quick nutshell of what we're looking to do. Um, I would be happy to answer any questions from the board on the project. Oh, Dave, you're muted.
Yep, thanks, Bill. Board members.
So Dave, uh, I mean, Bill. How does this transition? What do you do in the, how long does it take to change the tanks? And, and what do you do in the meantime for pressure?
So the, the, what, basically what's gonna end up happening is that the, when the tank will go offline. What it does is it mitigates essentially, you know, if there's a fire or something to that effect. So essentially, we have a little bit of risk during the project happening, but I mean, for the most part, everyone still has their water. We have a bypass. Line that will still run up to the top where the booster is. So everybody that is boosted up here in the top will get their, their feed. And the town remains active because we're, you know, pressure fed through M W R A in a bunch of locations. So, you know, this essentially is, it, it, think of it like an expansion tank in your, in your house. This is kind of the idea of what this does. It provides us, uh, uh, essentially a fail safe in case of a large, um, a large withdrawal or a break, those types of things. So that's essentially what ends up happening. So we have to bypass. We also have water main replacement. So the main feed that comes up here, that, that pipe has broke, um, a couple of catastrophic failures over the past few years. We had one in twenty seventeen, one this year, uh, as a matter of fact, too. So that pipe was bit, planned to be renovated, um, and, you know, we would have probably had this all done a long time ago, to be honest with you. Wasn't for, for, um, for the pandemic. So, um, essentially it, it stays operational. Um, you know, the system is itself, it just loses some of the, the, uh, controls within it, if you want to look at it that way.
How long does it take you to change out?
Uh, it's probably two months or so, Ryan. Is that something I'm right?
Yeah, there's, uh, Ryan Algro from Environmental Partners. Yeah, there's, there's a lot of site work to kind of prep, to, to demo the old tank and, you know, you gotta demo the old foundation and. Yeah, there's, Ryan Algro from Environmental Partners. Uh, yeah, there's, there's a lot of site work to kind of prep, to you know, to demo the old tank and, you know, you got to demo the old foundation and pour a new foundation. So that's a couple of months of work. And then the erection of the new tank is is, yeah, it's, it's like six or eight weeks for them to put it up. And now, and then we fill it and test it, you know, that call that another month of to commission the tank.
Yep. So we're looking to say about three, two to three, probably closer to two to three. That and then in the meantime, we'll also be doing some water main replacement, like I said, to get um, the the system up there, but. That's the plan.
Bill, Joe Pride here. Um, why the variance? Are you?
Um, we don't meet the height requirement. It's a little big.
That's a height thing?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, height and and the use as well. There's no, it's a residential zoning.
Yeah, we don't have, we don't have a municipal exemption within the town. Um, some towns do that across basically.
I was, I was thinking you would probably.
We would think we would have that, but we we don't.
A lot of towns have tank exemptions, but because there's only one tank in Wakefield, it just hasn't come up. So that's why I assume there isn't, there isn't one.
Yeah, so hopefully, I mean, we hopefully won't be back here for another hundred years.
I was just gonna say, it didn't, it didn't come up a hundred years ago.
Right.
Alright, thanks.
So you applied, there's two applications. One is a special permit for the use to raise and replace variants of height, right?
Height and setbacks, I believe.
Setbacks too, yeah. So we're all close with the setbacks, but.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
So we do, so keep in mind, we will somewhat increase the nonconformity because it is a, we, the tank is six inches wider. So there's a three inch change for the, you know, for for the nonconformity.
Understood. Thank you. Um, in the folder, I see we've got a a letter dated February sixth from um. Um, provisional chief Purcell. Um, have you seen that letter?
We haven't yet. We've talked to him about that. That's no issues. All of his comments will be.
Okay, I I imagine you would have, but just in case.
For sure, yeah.
Um, he had several comments, you know, in support of the project, but just with several, several comments about um, uh, things that are on the site and um. And in the uh. It's already some existing monitoring equipment, repeaters and things on the tech, you know, on the site, so.
Yeah, and that's the only other thing that would be installed on it is just those repeaters. We're not, um, you know, we don't, we don't lease the area. Um, even though we've been offered, that's not something that the town has entertained and has no plans to entertain.
Okay. All right. Anything else, board members?
Bill, how many, um, how many meetings did you have with the neighborhood? And how well attended were they?
Uh, well, we did one. Um, honestly, we, so we just had the one and it was very well attended. I want to say, I mean, right, how many? We have twenty people probably there?
Yeah, at at least twenty-five, maybe.
It was pretty well attended, so the neighborhood's pretty close, so that they all came and and, you know, we didn't really hear a lot of um. Yeah, they were pretty supportive of the approach.
Okay, the only thing I want to clarify is maybe my math was wrong, but Bill, you had. By the time you got it taken down, two to three months worth of work. And then your engineer said there were two or three months to build the new, so I think we're looking at more like a six to seven month timeframe as compared to a two or three month timeframe. Correct me if I'm wrong.
No, I think we were saying. I think you were saying what, six weeks to take it, you know, but a month to to take the old tank down. That goes down pretty fairly quick. We prepped the site another six weeks.
Yeah, I think, well, yeah, I think it's a cou- a couple of months of prep work and then a couple of months to put the tank up. Yeah, and then another same month to put the tank online, you know.
That's a five month project.
Yeah.
And and the expectation is that, you know, we'll be back in the spring of twenty-four to, you know, clean the setup and do the plantings, just because this project's going to extend into the, you know, beyond the planting season. So there'll be some cleanup.
When do you hope to start this project?
Um, I mean, the, but the goal is to get the new tank online by December first. So start this summer.
Okay. Anyone else?
So Dave, I I guess there's no occupancy, so how do we? And and, you know, they're going to finish it, but they should fall under the same category as everybody else would. If the, if the landscaping isn't done until a year. So the project is still kind of lingering. How do we handle that? Or do we care about that?
Yeah, Bill, what procedurally in town, like for this to come online, is there? Yeah, there isn't an occupancy permit. Is there something that somebody has to bless to say, yeah, flip the switch? It's online, it's done.
Yeah, the town engineer.
In the water superintendent.
No, actually, the ma- so Mast, we have a permit from the Environmental Protection Drinking Water Program to construct. You know, they've reviewed all our plans and they have to do a final inspection and they give us a letter that, you know, says you can go online. You know, they they look at all the bacteria results and all the things we have to do um, to put it online.
Well, maybe it's a trigger there, Chip, that prior to.
They don't care about landscaping. They're just looking at the water quality.
Right, no, they don't. That letter to go online. If the lands, if it's during the winter and they can't do the planning, then what we've done in other decisions, Bill, you might have seen them along the way is. We hold insurity like, you know, that it's some guarantee that you're going to do it, like the town would hold money or do something.
Hold money, the town would hold money on the town.
Town's gonna hold money on the town. I'm happy.
Yeah, that's a, that's a, I just.
Well, I mean, we're definitely going to do it. I mean, so you, we're looking to whatever condition you want to throw on for us to to, you know, for the, for the landscaping to be done. But I mean, I can tell you that, you know, based on the the meeting, um, they definitely want to see the screening, so that is definitely happening.
Yeah, I guess it's just more the comments that the neighbors would make, like, when the hell is that going to happen, right? Like.
It's going to be spring, it's going to be spring.
Yeah, but you're gonna have to field the calls, not me.
That's true.
I will say that, so, you know, the the contractor that we hire for this will be holding retainage. So they'll be, you know, we'll be holding five percent of whatever the contract ends up being, three, four million dollars. And so, you know, we're not going to release that until they do the landscaping, so, you know, if they want their two hundred and fifty thousand or whatever it is, they they got to plant the trees. And so we have a little bit of leverage to, you know, get them out there in the spring.
Oh, okay, so there's some leverage there.
Yeah.
Outside of this purview, because again, normally with. Residential developments or something, there's, there's some holding on occupancy, right? You can't fully occupy it until you finish your stuff. And that gives the building inspector some enforcement, right, as a zoning enforcement. And we have to sign off on the price, so it gives us something to make sure it does get done in a timely fashion. So we hear what you're saying.
Yeah, it's a new one for me, to be honest with you, Dave. It's new for me because other communities I've worked in and in terms of towns I've worked for and towns I've worked in. Um, they've always had the municipal exemption, so it's, there's no real filing, so this is new, this is new for me.
All right, well, we can talk offline. I mean, potentially, you know, even talk to Tom Mallor if it makes sense to have some language in there and what that might be. If things weren't done in time, but again.
Well, I mean.
You've already got that held over the, over the contractor. It it may not be necessary in this case, but.
Yeah, well, I would just say, great, I would just say that if we're creating variances. And we're approving variances and we give them the variances, that we could also say as a condition. That they can't release the retainage until we feel that everything that we saw and voted on has been met. That's just a double check. I I mean, I have no conf- I have all the confidence in the world that we'll get it done.
Misspoke there for a second, yeah.
I have all the confidence that it will get done, but let's say Bill moves on to one of those other towns he's talked about, or, you know.
He's not moving on, he's here for.
Something, something happens, right?
As long as they keep.
We should have something, it it's, I think they should. Right? I I think there just should be something, and I don't know whether it's, we can do it or not. But I would suggest it would be a condition that the retained does not get released to the contractor until they've met all the requirements of the. Variances.
And the plan, and the plans presented, yeah.
As presented. Kind of, that would be the, you know, that's the holdback for not getting it planted until the spring. And that will ensure, it will help them. Get the contractor back quicker.
And with that, we say that.
We have to sign off on that? Usually, isn't it someone from the building inspector's office has?
Well, we have to say, yeah, we have to say that, yeah, met our requirements. Then Bill would say, yep, okay, they're off, they're bed mine too.
Well, we've, we've gone out in the site and told Bill, we're all fine with it, so we could do the same thing here.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Can do that too. And that might be it, is that there's a, maybe just condition it that there's a, you know, a review. You know, prior, you know, within.
Yeah.
The sidewalk within eighteen months to ensure compliance or something like that.
Yep, I don't even know if you want to, don't time limit it, just say before release, so just in case things go haywire. Yep.
And we don't have a decision or anything.
Right, and getting, getting those words right, you know, the release of whatever, we used to occupancy.
Retaining. The project has to be done before the retainers gets released.
Yeah. Okay. Anything else? Okay. Any member of the public wishes to ask a question, make a comment, we will open that up at this time. Please raise your hand in the Zoom meeting. Seeing no hands, we'll close it to public testimony. So we need two votes for the permit and the variance. Or two motions, I should say, two votes.
Permit, Dave?
Yeah, so there's a special permit.
Oh, special permit, okay.
Special permit from Article four, section one ninety, uh, twenty-three on the use. For the raise and replacement and then the variance for the height and the width. Um, Article six, section thirty-four.
Do you care which ones we'd go first?
Um, I would probably do the variance first because then it feeds into granting the overall permit after that, once we vary them.
So I move, we grant a variances as presented to us this evening. With the plans as presented. For the height and width of the new water tower.
I second that.
Any discussion on the motion? All right, regular voting membership?
Yes.
Go.
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Can I vote yes? So that's unanimous?
Then I also move that we grant this special permit regarding use uh, on the site as presented to us this evening. Through the plans. As discussed.
And Matt?
Any discussion on that motion? Same voting membership?
Yes.
Go.
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And I vote yes. All right, that's unanimous as well. So. Bill will work with the offline, we'll get it drafted, get it recorded so that things can then proceed.
Sounds good.
Assuming nobody appeals it.
I hope not. We might not give them water then in that case.
Well, I would, I would say you did a good job with the neighbors because nobody was here tonight.
I thought we did. They seemed pretty, pretty happy about it.
We had, there was a lot of questions, but it, you know, overall, it went well.
But that's great, so thank you for doing that.
No problem.
Otherwise, it just gets sloppy.
Well, I'm sure we'll see each other soon, so um, I better do. Take care, folks. Thank you.
Have a good.
Thank you very much.
Have a good night.
Have a good night.
Yeah.
Chip, you didn't ask if it was um, irrigated.
I'm gonna go poke a hole in the side. Couple drill holes will take care of that.
I guess so.
All right, our final hearing of the evening, twenty-three dash fifty-six, Kelly A. Marsden and Alyssa Bach. At forty-one West Park Drive.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, Attorney Brian McRaeal representing Kelly Marsden, Alyssa Bach. They are the owners of property at forty-one West Park Drive. Uh, this is a rather straightforward special permit application for an accessory apartment at the property. It involves no variance aspects in that they. Um, meet the requirements of the bylaw, which if it's okay with you, Mr. Chair, before I even show the plans, I'm going to go through those standards. I think it might be appropriate with this application to do that. Um, under one ninety twenty-two A one after certain parameters. Uh, that are goals to be met for an accessory apartment in section. Uh, the first section is requirement or it states that it's the intent of the bylaw to allow accessory apartments within one family properties. Uh, except if if there's enforceable D covenants prohibiting the same, and the applicant has no knowledge of any specific covenants prohibiting it. Uh, where she lives. Uh, number two states that the accessory apartment uh, on on the uh, property. Has to be loc- where it's located must meet, the lot must meet the minimum lot area and lot with requirements of the applicable. Zoning district. And what I'd like to do for that, if I may, is um. Just share a screen. This is the original subdivision plan uh, for their property going back to nineteen sixty-seven. Um, Kelly's, Kelly and Alyssa's lot is lot forty. Um, it meets the lot with requirement because as you can see, it has a hundred and fifteen feet of frontage on um, West Park Drive. And the real lot is also the same perfectly square. And um, so it obviously meets the one hundred foot lot with requirement, and it's a twelve thousand square foot lot. So it is in compliance with that requirement, and I'm happy to send you a copy of that for record, Mr. Chair.
Yes, please.
Um, next uh, requirement, number three is it requires the owners of the lot upon which the accessory apartment is located, occupy at least one of the dwelling units on the premises. In this instance, both of them will be occupied by the owners because uh, Kelly is planning on moving into the accessory apartment on the lower level. And Alyssa and her husband Kyle uh, are about to have a baby in about four days and they're going to live in the main, main residence uh, up on the upper floor. Uh, they also uh, plan on filing a D covenant restriction, which is required by uh, that section of the bylaw. Number four is, is in they acknowledge that it's to be issued on a year to year basis, meaning that uh, if um, the uh, if. The use stops, they have to take out the kitchen, kitchen, as part of this, they would ask the board to waive the barn requirement. Where they'll make that acknowledgement to the building department on a yearly basis. Uh, number five requires accessory apartment to be located in the principal dwelling. Uh, you'll see in the architectural drawings when I get to them that that is the case in this instance. And number six requires that the minimum floor size of the accessory apartment within a principal dwelling. Be a minimum of three hundred feet, but no case shall exceed twenty-five percent of the habitable, habitable area. Unless in the opinion of the board, a greater or less remote floor area is wanted for the specific circumstances. Uh, this accessory apartment is well over the three hundreds uh, square feet. It does exceed the twenty-five percent. Uh, it's a split level home that is very conducive for that, and I I'm hoping that the board will agree that this is one of those circumstances. Uh, that um, it's warranted to exceed it, because you'll see when I get to the plans, it's thirty-nine percent. Um, and. The next requirement, number seven, uh, states that the accessory apartment shall not involve an extension or enlargement of the principal dwelling. Uh, and you'll see from the architectural drawings, there is no addition or extension being put on the property or the dwelling. Um, and finally, paragraph eight says that there may be, requires that there may be no more than one accessory apartment for a total of two dwelling units. Uh, per permitted on the lot, and you'll see from the drawings that that requirement is being met. So with all of that said. I'm going to bring up the. Plans, if I may. Okay, so these um, these are the plans at forty-one West Park Drive. And um, our architectural home design, I believe, did a, you know, really nice job on this. So basically, what we're showing is the existing uh, in rear look at of the house. Nothing is going to change in the front. In the back, you'll see, we're going to, I think, put a sliding door in here for the accessory apartment, but we'll get into the detail on that. They just did a, um, I thought would be helpful. We did the, uh, as I mentioned, the accessory apartment is going in the lower level of the, of the split. Uh, which is pretty normal. You've seen that before. And I thought it'd be a good idea to give you an existing look of what's there now. So what we have is, we currently have a two car garage. Uh, there's a bedroom down there, there's a laundry room, there's already a bathroom, there's already a living area down there. Uh, there's some stairs up and down and there's a closet. And this is what is being planned. So what what the plan is, is to take one of the garages and to use that as a kitchen and dining area for Kelly. Um, the other garage is going to remain. As you can see, and then the bedroom is basically going to stay the same, the existing living. Uh, there's going to be a common exercise room here, so that doesn't go into the accessory area. We've got a bathroom, which is existing, which will become part of it. So as you can see, and this is why I think the excess of thirty, uh, twenty-five percent is warranted, because it's really. Really what's happening here is uh, is just kind of a creation of a common area, and then they're adding the kitchen and the dining uh, to kind of work with what's already existing in that lower level. So when you look at the calculations, um, really, um, I I think the, the, the. I, I think the, 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 it, it, the, um, we'll start over here, the existing habitable dwelling. Currently is eight oh nine because you have the garage space and the, and the first floor is fifteen twenty-six, the first floor is not changing. Um, the proposed lower floor accessory apartment, the habitable area. Is going to be, uh, is the eight oh nine, and then, then is the add-on of two forty. Um, so the total lower, um, accessory apartment is ten forty-nine, and then you have the ninety-two square feet. Of common area, so the total habitable area on the lower level is going to be eleven forty-one. So when you look at the calculations, uh, the first floor, as I mentioned, as you see over here. Uh, hasn't changed fifteen twenty-six. And then the, the, um, the, uh, proposed, uh, accessory apartment. Um. Is one oh four nine, which is thirty-nine percent of the total area. This is just kind of an overhead of how that accessory is going to work. So we've got the kitchen area here, the remaining garage, you can see the door, the walk-in, this is a slider in the back, which you'll see in a minute. Lot of this area is really not changing. This is a common exercise area that we talked about. The impact on the area, um, I thought the board might want to see this, so this is the, um. The left elevation is you face the house on the left-hand side. Really what's going to happen here is one of the garage doors is going to go away. It's not going to be a door and a window. Uh, and, uh, this is a door into the garage which already exists. So really not much of a change elevation wise there. Uh, in the rear of the building, the only thing that's happening is a window for the accessory apartment and a sliding door. And the front elevation, no change whatsoever. And the existing right elevation, no change either. So I would respectfully suggest, uh, that this is. You know, a pretty straightforward, uh, textbook special permit for an accessory dwelling. Um, with a requirement that the board would find that, uh, the excess of twenty-five percent up to thirty-nine percent. Is warranted because of the style of the home and the layout of the home as it relates to the upper floor. Happy to answer any questions that the board might have.
Board members? Anything?
I'm okay with the, because of the layout of the house. With the added square footage.
I agree. I actually grew up on that street. People have been using those bottom floors and those split levels as apartments for a long time.
Okay.
I got no problem.
Very. Yep, works for me. Okay, um. So as you do, we'll open up the public testimony. If any member of the public wishes to ask a question or make a comment, please raise your hand in the Zoom meeting at this time. Seeing no hands, we'll close it to public testimony.
So, Mr. Chairman, I, I move that under one ninety dash twenty-two, we grant the grant the permit for. Use of an accessory apartment as presented to us by Home Reim- by the petitioner tonight. And Home Reimagined Design. Uh. Dated eleven one twenty twenty-two. And we allow the square footage to be. Uh. Thirty-nine percent of the total dwelling. And that we waive the. Need for the bond. Uh, upon a letter from them. However you guys word it, but a letter from them on a yearly basis. Uh, that it's still being used as family.
I'll second that.
Any discussion on the motion? Our regular voting membership?
Yes.
Joe?
Yep.
Jim?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And I vote yes, so it's unanimous. Permit approved, Brian.
Great, thank you. I know Kelly's on here, I'm sure she's happy, and Alyssa's here too, so on their behalf, thank you very much, Mr. Chair, members of the board. It'd be great for their family. Thank you.
All right. Good luck to you both. All right, board members. Getting towards the end of the agenda, we, uh, any other matters this evening? Any clerk aboard comments? Questions?
Is there any movement on actually getting a new member?
I have not heard. I was, um, I reached out to. Um. Sherry to inquire because I noticed on the town council's agenda, January twenty-third. That's when we were expected, um, that appointment to occur. It was not on the agenda, and, um, I didn't realize it until after the fact. Um. And according to Sherry, um. They want to conduct interviews, and I don't know if I said that last time, so I apologize if I'm repeating, but I have not heard from. I think Marine was supposed to reach out as the, as the chair, um, I have not heard from her, so I don't know where it stands.
So then we probably will be out there next meeting either at this point.
No, no, they just came out of their agenda for next week and it looks pretty full, um. But no, it's probably out into March now, um, but I'm not. I mean, if I don't hear from her by the end of the week, I'll probably reach out to her and just try to get a. A sense of where, you know, where, where, where it stands, but, um. So. Stay tuned, I'll try to get an update.
Because these seem like good meetings when, when we, you know. Could ease a person in, we haven't been incredibly busy, but we've had some good projects, we've had, you know, Aaron come in front of us a few times, it seems like one's really want some new members on. Um, that's the only reason I ask.
You know. Understood, agreed. Anything else?
Eighteen minutes.
Okay.
Yeah, I always say that and he gets mad at me. You say it and he lets you slide like.
That's because I don't do it very often.
Because I entertain clerk while item five is clerk and board comments, and you want to go right to the minutes. That item six. I want to give ample opportunity for item five to run its course, and it, it does.
But that's what I'm trying to get away with. Get done. I move that we. Accept the minutes from January twenty-fifth as written.
Second.
Thank you, discussion. All right, uh, Chip?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Um.
Yep.
Greg?
Yes.
Mickey?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Um. Well done, Gail. Welcome, welcome back.
Thank you.
Um. And, uh, I'm going to have to share with, uh. I'll share offline, but you know, there's transcription, the captions we have in the meetings. I was, I was somewhat amused that was Jesse was speaking. That, um. He, the way the transcription captured Aaron's name and and Bill's name, it was Miss Cocaine, Miss Reno, and Miss Cave. Um, it just, it, it just doesn't know how to handle some of these, and everyone's inflection and voices. I thought that was quite amusing, and I just wanted to share it with you, so. It's certainly entertaining a motion with Jurn on that note.
I move that we adjourn.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
All right, meeting adjourned, eight thirty-three P M. Good job, everyone. Thanks for your time. Okay, good night.
See ya.